I'd like to call the meeting to order of May 1st, 2025 Planning Commission meeting. We'll first have a pledge of allegiance.
I believe in the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Ms. Knabel. Ms. Dobson. Mr. Earhart.
Here.
Mr. Mitchell.
Here.
Mr. Aravalo.
Here.
Ms. Creveer.
Here.
Am I saying that right?
Yeah, you got it.
Mr. Sly.
Here.
Ms. Squire.
Here.
Mr. Morse.
Here.
Chairman, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Approval of agenda. Any questions? If not, can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Citizen participation. Okay. Okay, then we'll close that section. Formal actions. Approval of minutes.
Over that we approve minutes as presented.
I second it.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed?
Aye. Thank you. For staying.
Site plan application, Grace Community Church.
We have a couple of representatives that are here if there's any questions that I'm not able to answer. This is SP 24-8 for Grace Community Church of the Nazarene Site Plan, located off of US 169 on the west side of the highway. It is Zoned R1, and it's about 11 acres. The applicant, RIC, has submitted a request for a site plan for approval of Grace Community Church to expand their property. The expansion would be used for a youth room and a lobby area and probably some offices. I don't believe it's supposed to increase their attendees. So we have reviewed all the requirements per Section 17.340 of the Spring Hill Municipal Code. All the lot lines and right of ways are identified. All proposed structures with applicable data are identified. There's no water or sewer available. So they are on a septic which Johnson County maintains. There's no exterior lighting on the proposed structure, and the existing parking lot will not be improved. So there's no additional lighting. So photometrics would not be required at this time. The landscape plan was submitted and does meet city standards, and all the consultants and utility providers have reviewed. There are some outstanding comments from engineering that will get dealt with probably prior to going to city council or during the pre-construction. And if you have any questions, I will try to answer them.
Are they making any changes to the building facade or is this just an addition?
It's an addition.
Okay, I couldn't tell from the drawings.
Yeah, come on up.
Hey, good evening. Yeah, the facade of the existing building is going to be changed. The east-facing facade is going to be changed to match the expansion.
Okay. And so it'll, you'll maintain the stone wainscoting that you have there?
Yeah, it's actually going to be a concrete fiber kind of structure with a metal lath kind of deal on it. Sorry, I don't explain things real well.
So will that east-facing facade be all one material?
Be two materials. It'll be integrated across the old building and the new building.
Okay, so then the whole building will be uniform if it's done?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that face, that face, yeah.
And I think I did put an elevation in your guys' folder that they provided to us.
Cool. And no, I heard you say no lighting in the parking lot because no changes to the parking lot.
Yeah, they're not doing any.
No changes to the signage or anything either?
I don't believe so. Signage, no.
No new and improved sign? Now accepting new members? Okay, thanks.
Did I read that the city is requesting one sidewalk from the exit but not from the other two exits? Is that the city or is that for like fire code?
The city and fire department are requiring it. They are not required fire suppression at this time. So we both feel that it would be requirement for them to have a sidewalk for safe egress in case of an emergency.
Just the one?
Just the south side, yeah.
On the other two exits for fire, are those already, or I'm sorry, are those, do they already have a fire suppressant system there or are they also excluded from the fire suppressant?
It would also be excluded. I don't know if you guys have one there. Yeah.
So would they be required to put sidewalks in at those as well since they don't have fire suppressants at those exits?
You can require that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that would be your guys' call if you want to require that.
Any other questions?
So how many new exit doors do we have?
It's two new, two exit door or two doors?
I think it's three.
I thought it was three.
I thought it was three.
Three.
That's why I thought it was.
Oh, yeah, up there. I missed that one at the top, sorry.
Anybody else? If not, any motion?
I'll make the motion. I move to recommend approval of application SP 24-8 Site Plan of Grace Community Church, expansion to the Spring Hill governing body, including any conditions as presented in the staff report in engineering.
I'll second it.
I, for discussion purposes, I'd like to require that they have sidewalks on all three of the exit doors and connecting sidewalks for emergencies so that we can get any, any and all occupants out during a fire or even fire drills. If you, at this point, if you have somebody that's wheelchair or handicapped at all or on crutches for the day and we have a bad rain, they're not going to be able to exit those doors into grass or mud like we have now and get very far at all. I would, I would like to have, I'm back on my bandwagons of sidewalks that we need sidewalks to get around that building and far away from that building if it was to catch fire.
I think they can fall down and roll down the hill, which is fine.
I don't find that funny.
Is it accurate, is it accurate that those two entrances though, I believe that there's going to be a fence around them? I don't think they're meant to be like main entrance or exit points.
In a fire, they have to be a exit point.
I'm Andrea. I'm with RIC. Those two exits in the fenced area, that's with like the daycare kind of play areas, that those are not emergency exits. It's not intended to be a point of egress. It is the one to the left of the fence area. That is the emergency exit. And then the one on the north side of that building, that is an emergency exit. And then on the south side of the northwest building expansion, that's the other emergency exit door. So those two doors inside the fence area won't be a problem.
Again, I would like to have all three of them be sidewalked as, you don't know what's going to happen. I was in the school system for 26 years. I, if there's a door, somebody's going to use it in a fire emergency.
And, yeah, and so we've provided the stoops at all the.
I want sidewalks to be connected and all the doors able to go out as an emergency. Even if it's not for fire, there's other types of emergencies that can happen. And I'd like to see all of those doors have sidewalks and connected to get around to exit the building. Like I said, I've just done too many scenarios, worked too many scenarios being in the school system that I feel like it's really something that's needed.
Which to me also begs the question, if you have a door that's going to be labeled an emergency exit into a fenced area, will there be a gate for people to?
No, it's not labeled emergency exit. Those two doors are not emergency exits, only the one outside the fence.
On the very south side, right?
Yes, yeah.
So that's, that's more of the daycare. Play area.
Okay, so I got confused.
So those won't be emergency exits. But it sounds like one on the, on the south addition, it looks like there's a, there will be an emergency exit on the northwest side of that addition. And then on the very northwest corner of everything where there's another building expansion, there are two doors there? Or just one on the south side?
Just one is the emergency. Oh, yeah, you're right. I'm sorry, on the north side as well.
Okay, that's what I.
There is a connect, a sidewalk connected.
So the one on the north side, it, I can't quite read. Is there a sidewalk in front of that one with the dotted, the dash, the dashes?
Oh, no, that's a swale. It's a swale.
Oh, swale, okay. So all of those would exit onto grass, basically, maybe with a concrete pad.
Yeah, you had the concrete pad outside, yeah, and then, which is required in the, after that, it's a grass area.
So your typical flow though, when not in an emergency, would be to use the existing entrances and exits, which pretty much go right on your parking lot?
Yes, that's correct.
Gotcha.
And then there's one, another entrance to the north parking lot.
Yep.
But that's it, yeah. So these new, like the new emergency exit doors, these are to buildings, parts of the building that are not the sanctuary, so.
So the, I guess the idea, Cindy, would be that those would truly be emergency exits. They wouldn't be for regular use at all. So if you built sidewalks, the sidewalks would not be used. Or it may actually start directing traffic in a way they don't intend because they don't want people using those doors. They want people to continue to use the existing door on the north side to the parking lot and the east side to the parking lot on the east. But as far as emergency goes and your experiences with the school district, is it more for folks who are like physically, like in a wheelchair or something? Is that, is that the issue?
It is, but at any point you can have that is not mobile for any given reason. I mean, it's a sport injury, it's a vehicle injury, it's a sickness that they've been through, not just necessarily handicapped because of their lifestyle. It's at any given point in time. And we've had, we've had playgrounds that have been fenced as well. But even through that, even through that, you still have those doors that are in people's heads. That's the door you're going to go out because it is the closest door to get out.
Sure. Sure.
And I, I mean, and it's not just fire. I mean, in today's world, there's other reasons that you need, that's your closest door and that's your nearest door to get out. Um, I, I would think that you'd even want those playgrounds to have a gate for those reasons to be able to get out.
If you have a gate, you'll have a gate, okay.
I'm, I'm just saying that there, there are reasons in today's world that you want to get out.
Well, and in those scenarios, I don't think a sidewalk is going to make or break your exit.
I understand, but again.
You're going to get out.
But again, that student, that person that is handicapped and not able to, then you're depending on two adults that are going to be able to pick up that wheelchair and go. And they are responsible for other people as well. I just, just living through all the drills that I have been drilled in my head over the years, it's the safest thing to do. And if you guys have sat here on this board and long enough and heard me say, safety is my number one thing, whether it's the sidewalks, whether it's the tornado shelters, I'm just going from a safety standpoint.
So you would, okay, so I'm just looking at the site plan. You would want them to have, like on the northwest building, you'd want them to have a sidewalk, let's say from the southern entrance, straight west to that drive, that new drive?
I think all sidewalks need to connect up to get them back to safety.
Is that drive going to be paved on the west side of the building?
It's a gravel drive.
That's what I thought.
But even that, just so that the pavement can get to gravel so that you can get them going. I mean, you've got to get, you've got to make sure you have connectivity, that you've got gates open, that you have pathways. You've got to have a pathway to.
Would you be okay with a gravel pathway to a gravel drive?
Is a seven-year-old going to be able to put their wheelchair across the gravel pathway? Crutches can do it, can a, can a wheelchair? Can a 70-year-old in a wheelchair make it go? If it's a mobile one, probably so.
But is it enough to have a concrete sidewalk to a gravel driveway? Because, because you're still 20 feet from the building.
It's better than to mud and dirt and grass, yes. I'd be much happier with that than I would.
I don't think there's sidewalks.
I, I mean, it's, it's better than the alternative of grass and mud. Where is what my yard is right now, after all the rain.
Yeah, just add one point to the conversation, that north area there, from that new expansion to that parking lot, it, there's no way to get a sidewalk in there that's actually ADA compliant at all. It's like about a five-foot elevation change and across, and across the swell. So on that piece, that one door, just, just so you know, that's what's there.
And whichever one is that?
The door.
Very north.
Yeah, the very north one out of that.
Yeah, over here.
Yeah, on the north side of that, there's this drainage soil through there and in the parking lot.
Was it sidewalk that, yeah?
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's drainage soil. And then the sidewalk actually sits, not sidewalk, the parking lot sits about five feet above that pad site there, so, um, that it would not be a really usable sidewalk.
Without me doing this, you need to tell me if that's coming out of the emergency exit or is that coming out of the playground?
Northwest side, you just, where is that?
Yeah, so.
That, that exit would be ADA compliant, right?
That's correct.
Well, to get through it.
Yeah, yes, yes.
The width of the door would be.
So it's an emergency exit that's ADA compliant, but it's not going to, you're not then ADA compliant without having a sidewalk there.
Right. Well, fire code is that you need to have an exit and a stoop there, which is what we have. But beyond that, you know, it's, it's still ADA.
Legally speaking, they don't, just from what I'm seeing, they don't need to have, um, a sidewalk at every entrance.
I'm just concerned again on the safety issue, how you're going to get them out of there.
I think we're talking about an area refuge right here and we need to define what that area refuge is. Because right now, we're looking at adding a significant amount of concrete for our sidewalk to wrap back around to the east side, where I think this is really the only proposed sidewalk connection to ADA stalls. And that's a lot compared to what they're proposing right here. So I think the fair thing, the applicant is identifying what's a fair size or distance for an area refuge for the building and go on that route. Do they have to be 10 feet from the building? Do they have to be 12 feet from the building? What is that distance to define that area refuge? Otherwise, you're wrapping this whole thing in a four-foot wide sidewalk and it's, you know, it's triple the amount.
Yeah, and that's for exits that aren't really intended to be regularly used.
Correct. And, you know, then you start to get into the, the whole can of now, do you have to illuminate that path of travel?
Point, yeah, point taken. I understand that.
So it's, I mean, you're, we're kind of getting into it right here, so.
And if it was something truly happening, you would hope that you would have those others on call, I mean, that did get out and would come help. I get that. I'm just concerned that we're not getting.
Sure.
That's, that's my point.
It's not a very big area refuge.
Yeah.
I agree with that.
Just too many, too many practice modes and too many stories that we've all heard.
Fair enough. I don't have that number though, so don't look at me with that square foot. I just, reading between the comments, that's what we're looking for right here is, how big of an area does that need to be for everyone to feel comfortable? For when an able person's able to get out there, that they're in a safe, manageable distance from the incident.
Right.
You got that?
Yep.
I think he's dead on. Yeah, the cost would just be too dramatic, I think, for the sidewalk.
And, and not just that, if I can add, um, it's also some grading challenges. Because, you know, if you take a look at the grading plan, you'll see there's significant slope coming off that south building addition. So that was our biggest challenge.
So then we end up with a sidewalk with a 45-degree ramp.
So they'd move quick. So on the point of refu- or refuge, is that what you said? I just Googled it. It says, once out of the building, this is on the Fire Alarm Building Evacuation website.edu, um, at least 100 feet from structure or is instructed by public safety officials, is the safe distance to be out of a burning, or away from a burning building.
And that would be our fire review, saying what that safe distance is? Is that correct?
Uh, he would, yeah.
Is that four foot or five foot? It's five foot.
Now, was, now was the fire department okay with just the, the initial sidewalk and not the one in the back?
That's correct. It was just the south side, I'm stupid.
Any other comments? Bill, go ahead.
Yeah, I kind of like the concept of the, uh, area of rescue. Um, I've been in a multi-story building with areas of rescue designated in it. Really, from our perspective at the church, having that south door exit to the west on a sidewalk that went to an area of rescue that was in proximity to the fire apparatus road and then allowing the south exit out of the, uh, youth center to also use that area of rescue, that's a reasonable grade through there. Um, we intend to ultimately do some sort of courtyard, hardscaping playground area where those sidewalks actually could be usable for something. So, you know, if you wanted to go that direction, uh, it, not, not a hard thing to do. You know, technically, we avoid the slopes and maybe provides the solution. So I just wanted to throw that out.
So, so just so I understand, that would be on, let me point to it.
But it'd be out of here, going west?
No, I'd probably drop it south. So come out, you have that one? Yeah, exactly.
Okay, so.
And use that staging area for the fire apparatus, while it's still kind of close to the building, it, it is the staging area for the fire apparatus to come in, so as an area of, of rescue, it would make a lot of sense, right?
Yeah.
But then you're not, you're not having to deal with the big swell on the north end?
Correct, yeah.
At that point. Cindy, can you?
Cindy, that's sound better.
Mm-hmm.
It could be a good compromise for sure on that.
Yeah, well, and I, I, point taken with what Josh said. I'm just, any of this stuff, that's where my head goes. And it's like, oh my God, we don't, we can't get these guys out. We're stuck in the mud.
Well, and it, and it's, it stinks too because right now you're like, well, that's a ton of extra, you know, concrete and everything like that, which is a huge expense. But also, when you're talking about in a true emergency situation, the cost of a life versus cost of concrete. So like, I, I do get wanting to cover every emergency situation. We are planning for worst-case scenario, hoping it never, ever, ever happens, and it is a waste of money. Um, so I, I totally get what Cindy's saying, but I also think that, like what Bill said, that, that would be a great compromise.
Right.
Um, and also, yes, and also, like, like he said, if that's a staging area for fire and rescue, then that would be, um, a much better, make us feel better situation, at least as far as I go.
Anything else? Motion?
Do you need to do a new motion?
Yeah. Is there a new motion that includes that?
Yeah.
Needs to be withdrawn and.
I was going to say, because we moved and seconded.
So you just get either vote. I move to withdraw the previous motion?
Correct.
Seconded.
Draw or vote and it dries.
Second. Those in favor are withdrawing the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. Stand ready for another motion. Substitute.
No.
I mean.
And with conversation, at least then, that brings it to the forefront and then, it's just been brought to the table and it's been discussed and that hopefully then everybody's more aware of, okay, well, what about this? Because, I mean, in a school situation, you're talking about it all the time. Maybe in a church situation, you're not talking about it. At least it's there to be thought about and talked about more. Not, not that I'm wanting to cost you more money, it's just that that's the society unfortunately that we do live in today.
So do you want to make a motion where the sidewalks is the strong recommendation of the planning commission or a requirement of approving?
I think that it's a requirement to get out, whatever, 75 feet, 100 feet to.
But I think what, what is being proposed is just to the road on the west side, which is intended for the fire department to be able to come in and fight fires. So we don't know what that distance is.
Okay, I thought I heard somebody say how many feet. Maybe, maybe I misheard that.
You want to propose?
Sure.
Well, and then what about out the, what are we going to do with the, the playground doors that are not meant to be an exit door?
They won't be labeled as an exit, emergency exit.
Yeah.
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 And there will be a gate, just to be clear. There is a gate there set up.
So if someone finds himself out there, then they can.
Oh, yeah.
If it's an adult, it could be a gate, not a kid's gate. And the kids won't be there without an adult, so.
Um, okay, so before I make the motion, are you okay with language where we're just, um, including at least one sidewalk from each building expansion going west to the access road? Is that good enough?
Yeah, as long as we're getting them off of the mud, yeah.
Okay. Um, then I move to recommend approval of application SP 24-8, site plan for Grace Community Church, expansion to the Spring Hill governing body, including any conditions as presented in the staff report and by engineering, um, but also to include at least one sidewalk going west from each building addition to the access road on the west side of the property.
I second that.
Okay. Let's take a vote. Start on the left?
Aye.
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 Aye, aye.
Eight, zero, zero. All those opposed. Thank you.
Thank you all. My words.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We distracted Cindy with sidewalks rather than tornado shelters.
That's coming up. They've got some safe places out there.
Yeah.
Okay, item three, lot split application.
I heard you moved one under the breath over there.
Ready?
Yes.
Okay, we have a lot split, um, application LS 25-1 for 20175 Woodland Road. Uh, Mr. Baker, the owner, is here. If there's any questions I can't answer. Um, he is proposing to split, um, his one lot into two lots. Um, lot one is proposed to contain 2.6 acres and lot three, or lot one, no, lot two, three acres. Um, there will be a private sanitary sewer easement that will be recorded with the county that goes directly up the middle of the two, um, of the lot split. Um, engineering has reviewed and approved the legal description. Um, so we just need, um, approval from you guys, um, for it to be recorded with the county. And this is that piece of property that's just west of Woodland Crossing subdivision and just south of Woodland Connect, whatever we call it.
It, it looked like, um, this property used to have one or more homes on it, but those had been taken down?
Correct.
Okay.
It used to have one house.
One house, yeah.
And how long ago was this annexed? Do we know?
Hmm, couple of years, I think.
Okay.
I'd have to look back. I'm not real sure. It's only been. Do you remember when it was annexed?
I can't hear you.
Do you remember when it was annexed?
I can't hear you.
Do you remember when it was annexed a year ago?
About probably two, two years ago.
Oh, two years ago, okay.
At least two, maybe two and a half.
So recent.
It used to be a farm.
Yeah.
It has farm buildings on it that had fallen down and a house on it that was full of mold. We had, we tore it down.
I've always really liked that property right there on the corner.
Yeah.
And then Amy, are there any additional requirements that the city is requiring to bring anything up to code? Is, is, is it part of the condition of approving the lot split?
No.
Okay.
I have a question that might actually not have anything necessarily to do with what's being proposed. But I know like in counties, they have a certain size of which your land can be built on, built on or divided. Does the city have anything like that?
We do.
What is that?
Hmm.
I'm, I'm coming up with the hard-hitting questions, Amy.
Um, man.
Page 260.
You're kidding me.
I was just saying, she doesn't have it.
Yeah, do you have it?
I do have it.
Oh, what is it?
All right. Um, such splits, this is a section 17.374 tract or lot splits. Uh, under A5, such split will result in a tract without direct access in less than 75. So it needs 75-foot frontage on both lots. And then also, um, I mean, there's other guidelines here, like there can't be a new street or alley that's seen to be proposed.
Sure.
Um, it needs to have direct access. Uh, but that 75-foot, I think, is what.
Yeah, and it exceeds that. Okay, yeah.
275.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, you have your notebook up. She got it looked up and marked.
Any other questions?
Um, is the zoning, what is the zoning?
It's currently R1.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I don't see the sanitary easement on the plan.
Um, it's in your, there's a separate one. If you look in your folder, you'll, I put it in there, the exhibit.
Seems like it comes from the south.
Yeah.
And this is provided to the, as it is of today, not potential coming in sewers, right? The sewers are, are there now?
Yeah, correct.
But it's not on the plat? I see it on the.
It's private, um.
Okay. So it didn't normally show up on the plant if it's, plat if it's private?
I don't know why it's not on the, are you talking about the survey here?
No, I'm talking about the easement, the, the private easement for.
Right.
I don't see it on the plat. They have.
Oh, yeah, I don't, I'm sorry, I can't, I don't, I can't answer that.
Is that on page eight?
Well, it's, yeah, it's on, um, this last page. You want this?
It on the last page, but I don't see it on the plat.
Oh, I got you.
Yeah, no, I, I see that, but that's not the plat. That's not what's registered with the county.
Do you, do you know, you know, by the private portrait on the.
He can't hear.
By your private sewer easement is not.
It's been recorded.
It's been recorded.
It's already been recorded.
It must have came after, I guess. It must've came after, I guess.
There's a, there's a, there was an easement on it and it's been recorded again on the properties.
Okay. So it's just drawn separately.
So we see that this is currently zoned R one, will it be staying R one for both those tracks?
Um, he does currently have a rezoning application in that hasn't been processed and you guys will see it.
Okay.
It's, we were just waiting for all of this before we processed it.
You know, it is odd that it's not showing, considering that there was a house there and everything. That's odd.
Any other discussion? Anybody have a motion?
I move to approve, uh, application LS two five one lot split as presented in the staff report.
Second.
All those in favor, on the left?
Aye.
Oh.
All three.
Aye.
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 Okay. Eight, zero, zero.
I'm here to come off of it, knows that works.
Okay. Preliminary plat, Maplewood, Maple Valley route.
Maplewood Valley. Um, I believe, um, Travis with, uh, Grata is on the phone, Travis, can you hear us?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, yes, we can. Um, so this is, um, a replat of the preliminary plat for Maplewood Valley, PP dash twenty-five dash one. Um, there was an issue, um, when they went to build out the road at two hundred and seventeen street that meets up with the Oakwoods, um, subdivision. Um, we don't know if it was a surveying issue or what, but the alignment was off. So they've had to replat, um, re- preliminary platted, uh, on lot forty-six, that's right there on the corner. They've had to take some additional right-of-way from there. Um, so this is just, um, replating the preliminary plat to show that additional right-of-way there and the realignment on, uh, lot forty-six. Um, this has been reviewed by engineering with no comments. Um, it's just, it's kind of, you know, cleanup needs to be done.
I'm sorry, this is Travis with who, Amy?
Grata.
Thank you.
So has that road already been constructed?
They have started.
That lot forty-six, since, I'm sorry if you guys have already talked about that, is that designated to be a future home? Is that R one?
Yeah, if, if you go, uh, go to the very, page twenty-seven, it shows all of the lots. And then you can kind of see where forty-six is, it's, it's.
I said, I looked at it on the packet when it came through, but I wasn't, I wasn't exactly sure. I assumed it was supposed to be a home, I just wanted to make sure that that wasn't like park space, or you know, something like that, considering, that's why I just wanted to make sure, that's what that is. Oh, yep, correct.
It was a big lot.
I was going to ask this, how much, um, would they have to, I guess, lose with that curvature adding in?
Um, I think it was around six hundred and sixty feet, do you know if that's right, Travis?
Yeah.
Wow.
Okay, okay, thank you for clarifying.
Playing friendly.
Any other concerns? I think it's fine, just trying to straighten the road out.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Make it legal.
Make sure I fully understood what was going on, so thank you, appreciate that.
Okay. I entertain a motion?
I move to approve application PP two five one preliminary plat of Maplewood Valley.
I second it.
Second. Any other discussion? None, if not, the left.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And you got another number five.
Yep, so this is just the replat of the final plat, um, of this Maplewood Valley. Um, so it's just the replat of lot forty-six to, um, meet what the preliminary plat you just approved is. Um, nothing really new to say. Um, if you have any questions, we'll be happy to help.
Move that we approve, suggest approval to, uh, of FP dash twenty-five dash two Maplewood Valley, third plat.
Second.
Hey?
That final plat.
That's right.
Final.
Any other discussion? No, none, we'll start the right, left.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
This is eight, zero, zero.
Thanks Travis.
Thank you.
Any reports?
Um, none with us.
Okay. Any other items that people would like to bring up?
Um, I just wanted to mention that I'm going to be at the Spring Hill Education Foundation golf tournament on Monday. And I know that I'm probably not the only one up here, so I don't know if we need to put out, uh.
Okay, when is that, Monday?
It's Monday.
Okay.
It's in going to my own.
Oh.
Okay.
What time does that start?
Early, um, I think the golfers will have to be checked in and everything by like seven thirty, so. They're going to do the, uh, scholarship presentations in the morning though, um, so that'll be good for the students, so. In the past, they're, like, they were kind of waiting around, you know, the golfers will be back in around the lunchtime. So that'll be cool to have that in the morning for the kickstart, but hold me to that time. Morning guy.
Sounds fun.
Great, anything else, anybody else?
Everything's good with Pat?
Everything's good, his birthday Sunday.
I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, like if I was saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Stand to adjourn.